Message to Harvey and Mike about somebody coming. State of the situation.
Yeah, we'll be good.
Hi, Sandra, I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Would you stand for the prayer and pledge, please? Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come and do the business of the city. We ask that you will help us decide and if we're according to your will. We thank you so much, Lord, for our wonderful staff that we have here, and we just thank you in Jesus's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. I wanted to bring it to your attention in case most of you out there aren't even old enough to know. 1945, today is the celebration of VE Day, 1945, victory in Europe. So, I wanted to, I always like to acknowledge because we, we had so many that we lost in that war, and I'm thankful for our military. Can you not hear us? Oh, oh. 1945, VE Day, May 8th. Oh, there we go, there we go. We lost so many, so many in World War II, but it was quite a victory. I don't think any of you are probably old enough to know 1945. I might be the only one here. But God bless our country, thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. Well, I need that, I guess. The consent agenda, council.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment, is there anyone that would like to make comment before the council meets of anything that isn't on the agenda? Anybody? Once again, anybody would like to speak? Public comment, seeing none. All right, consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Selby, was that her? I can't hear it on me. And Councilwoman Cleveland, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, I'm gonna read this. We have a proclamation. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 3rd to be dedicated as the National Police Week and May 15th of each year to be Police Memorial Day in honor of the federal, state, and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas it is known that every 57 hours an American police officer will be killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States, and 189 officers will be seriously assaulted in the performance of their duties. And whereas law enforcement officers as our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right of freedom, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the City of College Place is very proud of our law enforcement officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. And whereas the College Place Police Department provides the highest quality service preserving human rights, lives, and property. And whereas College Place Police are committed to the highest professional standards, working in partnership with our citizens to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safer environment, and improving our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Marge Nyhagen, Mayor Pro Tama of the City of College Place, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2018 as Police Memorial Day and the week of May 13 through 19, 2018 as Police Week in the City of College Place to call attention to the College Place Police for the outstanding service they provide to our community. I also call upon our citizens to express their thanks to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day and return to our homes knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all those who would violate the law. Thank you, miss police officers. Let's get our police officers that are here to stand. Are they here? Yes? All right. Thank you, thank you.
If you could sign.
I would just like to say on behalf of the College Place Police Department and the law enforcement community, thank you for your support. Very much appreciate it.
Bill, tell us, how long have you been here?
Forty-one years and five months.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is for him? Okay. Where is it? Oh. I'm sorry. I don't wanna do that. Okay. Now, where do we go? Public hearing. Community Development Block Grant, 2018 application, sidewalk gaps, Mr. Rizziotello.
Hey, thank you. This application I mentioned is a prior council meeting, but the premise behind it is to fund construction of sidewalks and gaps in the core of the College Place community, which is mainly around College Avenue. And those are the two census block groups that actually qualify for community development block grant funding. The whole city does not qualify, it's just two certain block groups. As far as the streets that were recommended to put sidewalks in within this application is Davis Street from the east side of Whitman, east side from Whitman Drive to mid-block between Second and Third, Bait Street, the gaps that go really from Fifth all the way down to 12th, Eighth Street between the Bait and Birch areas, Second Street on the north side from mid-block where the sidewalk ends over to Davis, 12th, there's a gap between Bait and College, and then Bait from the west side of 12th to 13th. I prioritize these segments in case we only get partial block grant funding. In the grant application I'm developing for this, there is no local match, this would be a solid grant should we be awarded this. And the segments were prioritized based on connectivity, fully benefiting residents of qualifying block group. What we learned the last time when we went after community development block grant is if it looks like the benefit bleeds over into a census block group that isn't qualifying, then it automatically gets thrown out. So therefore, we have to be very careful about what streets we're going after. And then the existence of streets with partial sidewalks, 'cause that's why Second was picked as opposed to First or Third, there's a longer extent of existing sidewalk along Second, so therefore, the cost would be lower to make that connection. So, that is the basic premise behind this grant opportunity.
I'd like to open it up now to the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, please come forward and state your name and address for the public hearing. Again, if anybody in the audience has a comment to make about this, a public hearing, open. No one? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Now, we have another one. Here we go again, okay? College Avenue Micro Center Business Grant, Mike.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I thought I did. Is there a motion?
I just made a motion.
Ms. Sherman made a motion to close the public hearing, and the Selby, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. You can tell I haven't done this before, please forgive me. All right, now, Mike?
The second public hearing here is for, again, a community development block grant. However, this is a separate tranche of money. The sidewalk one is under the general purpose grant program, this is under the economic opportunity grant. This is gonna look very familiar because this is a grant that we tried to pursue last year to go after forming a business grant program that would go toward helping cover equipment, signage, pretty much the needs of a business. And it would be existing businesses, and businesses wanting to locate within those census block groups, 'cause those are the two qualifying ones. There's a flyer, it has a map of the two census qualifying block groups. In this grant request, it would be to go after $100,000 with 10,000 of the city match. I believe we have a greater chance of giving this grant this go-around because it is in a separate bucket among the economic opportunity grant, whereas before, everything was all meshed together. And then Craft III, who gets quite a bit of state community development block grant, they signed a letter of support and partnership with us, and that will allow us to score extra points in the grading of the application. So I believe we have a better shot this go-around at that. And that's the basic premise for this grant opportunity.
I'll open it now to a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to this, come forward and state your name and address. Public hearing, open. One more time, public hearing, open, to speak to this. Seeing none. Do I have a, from the council?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Councilwoman Cleveland makes a motion, and Councilwoman Sherman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, thank you. It's carried. One more time, Mike. No, this is Mr. Rickard, I'm sorry, got the wrong, not Mike this time. This is the stepper for the street annexation.
Right, this is an annexation of 3.68 acres. Could you pull up the, it should be a map. Yep. So, this has been before you, before you, last month, you accepted the annexation as proposed. It's a county island, here's C Street, Naval Street, there's two residences on the property, there's one on this larger piece up front, and it has a driveway on the west side, and then the stepper piece is these two pieces back here that has an access easement across the front lot, providing access to the residents back there. Initially, it was just the stepper piece in the back, and we talked to the neighbors to the north, and they decided to join the annexation, so that's why we have this larger one illuminating the mountain, which is great. We don't hear this very often, usually it's pretty piecemeal. So back in April, or excuse me, in, yeah, in April, the council decided, in May, excuse me, no, this is May, this is May 8th. So, in April, going back and forth, this is dates, in April, the council decided to accept the annexation as proposed, assign the zoning designation of R-75, and then also assign off the assumption of this existing city indebtedness to the property as we announced. On April 24th, we posted the site, published a notice in Union Golden, and mailed notices to the surrounding property on the 3rd and 4th. That's the extent of the annexation information. Any questions?
I'd like to open this to a public hearing.
I missed it, because there aren't any letters in here, you didn't get any feedback or any response.
No, we did not receive any, any comments.
We're gonna talk about, okay. I'd like to open it up to a public hearing to the C Street annexation. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, come forward, state your name and address. Once again, if anyone has anything to say about the C Street annexation, come forward for the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Councilwoman Selby moves for the closure, is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Sherman will second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to the action items on these things that we've heard. The community development grant, Mr. Rizziotello again.
Just reiterate, this is to fund the sidewalk gaps that exist within the two census block groups. The street sections were chosen connectivity to schools and so forth, streets already have existing partial sidewalk, and then fully benefiting the residents of qualifying block group. We wrote this resolution so that way it can be up to 750,000. The initial cost estimate went up quite a bit because in order to put in sidewalks that are protected, we need to basically put in some curb on some of the streets that don't have it, so therefore, the new sidewalk wouldn't get undercut as soon as we put it in. So, that's why there's some different cost from initially when this was presented a while back. But again, this would be no local match, this is putting in for the full grant amount, so this is just a resolution supporting the application, which is due June 1st.
Councilwoman Selby?
A question about this grant, would the property owners be required to put in part of the sidewalk cost, or?
The way this was, the way this was written is that the grant would cover all of that, so that is how we're proceeding with the grant application.
So is this just a starting point with the streets you've selected, or do you have another list that, after these are accomplished, a list of streets you want to work on? And also, do you have a plan in mind for preserving older districts that, within the city that don't have sidewalks, that probably don't have room for them between the curb and the houses?
Yeah. I mean, as far, as far as the areas where they don't have room for the sidewalks, there are various programs we can go after, from transportation improvement board to improve the said street, then maybe put in a smaller sidewalk section to fit in in the remaining right of the way. Some streets, unfortunately, that would be very problematic. I could do like cross from where I live, Ninth Street, the curb literally goes right up against the base of the house across the street from me, so can't really do much there as far as a prioritization of streets. If we did get this grant, pass this grant, if you look in the agenda packet, the maps that were included, there was a highlighted section of recommended and non-recommended. Recommended was the one that I felt we could make the strongest case for, and I went to a workshop in Moses Lake where I ran this past the State Department of Commerce staff, and they felt we had valid argument. So that, that's why it's the best to go after that first. The non-recommended ones are still ones we can go after, but it would be a more challenging case. So, we're gonna try with this community development block grant run, but beyond this grant, there are several other sources we can look into.
Thanks.
That the funds would not be spent unless we get the grant, is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the, that we authorize the city administrator to submit a community development block grant application for sidewalk gap construction in qualifying census block groups.
Motion by Councilwoman Dickerson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Selby, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, it's carried, thank you. All right, here we go. College Avenue.
Yep. This grant, again, looks quite familiar, it's pretty much the same grant as last year, where if we get the money, we will run a competitive process where it could be used for sign improvements, tenant, business owner, space rehab, work, marketing, promotions, equipment, and short-term utility assistance. And looking at previous grants that have been funded, typically that 25% business match requirement, it seemed like those were the grants that got successfully awarded by the state, so that's why we went with that, I believe, that we'll have a greater chance 'cause we got the Craft III support letter. And then we, in this, there would be 10,000 local city funds in the future fiscal year should we be awarded this, because you get greater points with the economic opportunity pool if you do have a little bit of skin in the game. So, that's the basic premise behind this grant application.
Same way if we don't spend it unless we get the grant.
Yep, yep.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to authorize city administrator to submit community development block grant economic opportunity for $100,000.
Motion by Councilwoman Cleveland, second. By Councilwoman Bobbitt, all in in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. All right. Where are we now?
The annexation.
The annexation for Mr., that's Mr. Rickard again, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Do you want to do it again?
Yes.
Open for Marge.
Oh, I can't hear. Councilwoman Selby, question?
I move we approve ordinance number 18-010, stepper wish annexation.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Selby, second by Councilwoman Sherman, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Hartwig, award for the bid for the chip block, chip rock.
We went out for folks for the chip rock for the chip sealing projects that are gonna happen this year. We received three quotes, one from Central Washington, one from Hundred Asphalt, and one from Conan Rock Products. Conan Rock Products was the low quote, and so we are asking for authorization to, for expenditure for the chip rock not to exceed 14,200. The reason it's more is we always add more because when you're getting rock, it's a dump truck full, and the weights change every load, and there's variances. So, just asking for approval from the council for the purchase of the chip soft rock, chip, chip rock from Conan Rock Products.
Sounds like a rock room, doesn't it?
I move we authorize the purchase of the chip seal rocks for this year's projects from Conan Rock Products for the amount not to exceed 14,200.
Second, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Dickerson, do you have a question? Second?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So there was already a second.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
I think that we need to work with our outreach to explain to our citizens why we do chip seal.
That's a good point.
I hear an awful lot of whining about it, and
I do too.
In fact, even my son, now that he's old enough to vote, said, "Mom, I don't want you voting for any chip seal projects." And I'm like, "I will be voting for chip seal projects, they're very important." So, I think there was a need for education.
And I'll just add to that, when we discussed this the last time, unfortunately, the city news letter was too close to prime time going out for us to actually write a good article for it to actually be worthwhile. However, that will be included in the upcoming news letter that gets mailed out to everyone.
I can't remember if I brought it up before.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay, sorry.
We might need to do a presentation at the high schools, what it sounds like.
It's not just him, but he was the one that I did take the effort to educate myself.
It's surprising to know how many people know about chip rock, isn't it? We've had a motion and a second.
Additional question, what is the complaint that you get about chip seal rock?
Just all the rock and gravel, and it's rough.
Mess.
It's not smooth, it's not paved street, that's, that's the problem.
So we've been doing it for 15 years, and we just have new people that aren't used to it?
Oh, no, I think the complaints have been
Well, we have, I've been here for 40 years. When I started, we were doing chip seals, then we took a break, and we spent a lot of money on asphalt, and people like that smooth surface. And then, since we don't have the money to do the streets like we want to, we have to go to the chip seal. The purpose of the chip seal is it extends the life of the road seven to 10 years and delays that big expense.
What do you call the process when you have a road that has big cracks and that you seal the cracks?
That's just crack sealing. And so we generally, we generally will do the crack seal prior.
Do you, do you seal it with tar and sand or gravel, depending on the size of the crack?
Yeah, we seal it with a crack sealing, that's a oil base or, or
And then do you sand it, or?
Generally not, it's made so it, you generally want a crack seal in cooler weather, you don't want to do it in the hot because the cooler weather, the cracks are wider. And it also helps to get that crack seal as cool.
Okay, I get it.
We've had a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
And Paul, I think you're up again
I'm up again.
For the disconnect notice.
Oh, that's the nice part.
Blah.
Okay. We have a cross-connection control program that's part of our water ordinance. Cross-connection purpose is to protect the city's water from contamination via backflow or backside. It is mandated by WAC, by the Health Department, that, that water purveyors provide this service to, or this regulate, and implement this regulation.
Do you want to speak to this?
No, I won't.
We have, and this requires an annual test of the backflow device. So we've been doing this now for about five, six years. We've been trying to get people to come onboard and do these tests annually. It has not resulted in a great success. And I won't say whether I agree or disagree with it, but it is, it is the regulation, and we need to, we need to get compliance. And so we have about 400 people that have had devices that we've notified for the last two, three, four years that have not complied with the test. And so it is time now that we force the compliance. And the, the, the WAC and our city code says if they don't comply, you shut off their water. So we are coming here to inform you that we are going to send out this letter that you have in your packet, saying that these people that have not complied have until the 29th of May to comply, or their water will be disconnected. And it's not something that I enjoy doing, but I mean, my hands are tied as well, and the administration's hands are tied because it is a regulation from the Department of Health to Health to do. So I can answer any questions.
Councilwoman Selby?
Is there an option for people to sign up to get notices like this by email?
I don't know. I mean
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Very good.
It would be helpful for people like me.
Because right now, yeah, it takes Kevin, the cross connection control person, quite a bit of time generating the letters, they have to be specific to the address, and so forth. Then they come in here and they get printed, and folded, and enveloped, and test reports as well.
And I live at country estates, and none of us get it, it's just the owners get it, so we never get any kind of notice from the city.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Generally, those people that are part of an association are, they generally can apply
Yes, yes. Okay.
My question was, what kind of instructions do you provide with this letter to indicate how they would go about being in compliance and?
We provide with this letter a list of certified testers that will do it. I think there's about eight to 10 testers on that list.
There's more?
Was there more than that now? So I don't, I don't, I don't know what program Kevin does, but there's a lot of testers around, and, but the prices range significantly, so we provide the testers news. And then the testers also have a form that they fill out.
Well, and just for more information for you, we got a postcard from the people that did it last year for us, saying, "Don't forget, now's the time to do it." Fine print apparently says, "We're going to do it unless you call us," so I got two this year, so you can just give one someone else.
Yeah, and we're going to try to, we're going to try to work something out with Wawa next year, because Wawa decided to do all of their notices in May, so the testers are extremely busy in May, and so we're going to try to timing issue, so that we're not jamming up all the testers all at once.
Yeah, right when irrigation turn-ons are also happening.
Yeah, definitely. So could you explain for council and the public, what devices are the most liable and for contamination and so forth?
You got, you got, you got basically three devices. Our, the high hazards are protected by above four, one isn't really not, it's a device, it's an air gap, it's a separation from the water system. The second, the second one for high hazard is an RP, a reduced pressure principal backflow device. That activates, so that if the pressure drops, the valve opens and it discharges water out the valve into the waste area. Then you have, the most common one is double check, that's what a lot of people have on their irrigation systems, it's generally underground in a box. And then you also have a pressure vacuum breaker. Now, and that's one that you see above, above ground. The other option that people have, because it's not the, not the nice, the more common one, is an atmospheric vacuum breaker, sorry for all the technical stuff, but an atmospheric vacuum breaker, if they put that on, does not have to be tested, because it can be tested. But it's several, it's a vacuum breaker per valve, per station.
Does it read the humidity or?
No.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, about the block party?
Okay, thank you, I just want to inform council about this and put this on your calendar if you want to attend us. We're collaborating with the student organization over at Wawa University, is the outgrowth of our youth advisory commission, they express the desire to have an event that basically unifies the community and then the student population, so that's what this block party event is. What's going to happen is that College Avenue will be basically blocked off between Whitman Drive and Fourth on Sunday, May 20th, between 3:00 and 8:00 p.m. The actual event itself will be 4:00 or 7:00 p.m. And then the student group, they are organizing food trucks, city businesses will have booths over there, there'll be a bouncy house, they're organizing bands as well. And then the city, we're providing some security coverage to help them out, so this will be a first event like this, so we're looking forward to it, and so is the youth commission and academic development commission. Any questions?
Sounds good, doesn't it?
I don't really have a question, but I would just like to say I really appreciate, and I think this, the city working with Aswul on this, and I think this is going to be a great event.
Yeah, in talking with Tim Kassaka, who's the social vice president over there, they're up to about 75 vendors already, so.
Councilwoman Selby?
I would just like to actually follow on with another announcement. The, every year, the 10th graders at College Place High School do a project, and we saw the Little Library, they came and talked to us about, that was one of the projects. Well, on May 30th, they're going to have a showcase where all the sophomores display their projects and are available for community members to come and talk and check out their projects.
What date, when?
May 30th. At, there's a dinner beforehand if you want to buy dinner, and that starts, I think, at 5:00, and then 6:00 to 7:00 is the showcase. And I strongly recommend it. Even though my son is no longer a sophomore there, I still go, because it's actually really cool.
That's right, it's good to support our area, Carrie.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? A adjourn, a notice to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Movement to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And don't forget, folks, if you still have your mother, Sunday, and if you don't, do something good for somebody else.